The agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation, regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let me know. Let us know at the beginning of your presentation, and staff will distribute those to council. If you're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on a work session item? If not, we will now recess the regular session and convene to work session with a report from our city manager.
Good afternoon, mayor and council, and to the public. We have no changes on the agenda today and no employee recognition items for today. So I'm going to move quickly through my report. We have one public hearing you're going to hear about. It's public hearing 807, which will be regarding the adoption of revisions to our residential tax payment policy guidelines. We have 34 resolutions today, and I'm not going to highlight any one particular one, but did want to point out that two of our work sessions today will go into further detail on a couple of the resolutions. And certainly in the grouping of resolutions, you're seeing a lot of great work hitting your goals of creating a sustainable community as well as a lot of infrastructure focus in this group of 34 resolutions. We have 10 ordinances on the agenda today, nine of which are on second reading, which means we'll hear a lot from Jennifer later. She's ready for that. And the first reading is ordinance 842, which is an ordinance to increase the number of firefighter grade-one positions from 85 to 96. So with that, mayor, that concludes my report, and I'll take any questions from the council.
Any questions? The consent agenda includes resolutions 2023, 808 through 841. Are there any items the council would like to remove from the consent agenda? If not, the consent agenda will include resolution 2023, 808 through 841, with the exceptions of 826 and 832, as council member Boardwood has filed an affidavit of substantial interest for each of these items. The next item on the work session are items 2023, 798 through 800. Bradley, would you please introduce the first work session?
Sure. We're going to start with work session 798, discussion of our shared mobility system. I'm going to invite Laura Wagstaff down, our planning manager, and she'll introduce the representation from Super Pedestrian, our newly selected shared mobility system provider. They're going to be providing an overview of the product, which they have brought down for council's perusal down here, the scooters. Overview of the product and the system proposal. And Lauren, if you don't mind introducing the team from Super Pedestrian, and take it away.
Absolutely. Good afternoon, mayor and city council, Laura Wagstaff, planning manager. I am so excited to be here today to introduce Super Pedestrian to the city of Waco. On tonight's agenda, you'll be considering resolution 23814, which enters into a license agreement with Super Pedestrian to provide a shared mobility system in the city of Waco. So today-
Is this a new one? Is this a new one? It's not the blue one that we've had before or during?
I think so.
Yes, ma'am. Their contract expired, and then we put it out for bid again.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So today we have with us from Super Pedestrian Jacob Mandell to provide an overview of the exciting things that we can expect from their system. I'll turn it over to Jacob.
Good afternoon, honorable mayor and city council members. My name is Jacob Mandell. I am a policy manager with Super Pedestrian. We're a leader in micro mobility solutions in the United States and throughout the world, and I'm excited to share this proposal for a shared mobility system here in the city of Waco. A little about Super Pedestrian. We're a world leader in transportation robotics and human-scale mobility. We were spun out of the MIT Sensible Cities Lab in 2013, and we hold over 40 patents in AI and electric vehicle technology. One of our devices, the Copenhagen Wheel, was named Time Magazine's invention of the year in 2014. We took the lessons we learned from that device, and we spent over two years building our scooter for shared use, and we debuted the Link scooter equipped with our vehicle intelligence system in 2020. In 2022, we expanded and added a-
Just a second. I think there's a passing cart for-
For me.
I think it may have stopped. Oh! Little convention center chatter on the back.
No worries.
Okay. Sorry about that. I can't hear too well, but I think it's about to end. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
No problem. So we've added a, in 2022, we added a seated scooter to our fleet to enable those longer rides and accommodate people with different abilities. And as of today, we've grown to serve more than 65 cities in 11 countries throughout our three years operating our shared mobility systems, and we have the best compliance record in the industry. A little about our vehicle intelligence system. We designed our scooter from the ground up with safety in mind, and so vehicle intelligence system is constantly checking the scooters to see if they're able to be rented. They do over 1,000 vehicle health checks every second, every ride, to make sure that the scooter is safe to be used. There's over about 140 safety critical conditions that are monitored throughout the ride to make sure that the rider is safe. And the scooter is smart enough to autonomously adjust itself and correct itself if there's any issues, and will pull itself offline if it decides that it can't fix itself, and will dispatch one of our employees to come and pick it up and repair it. Like I said, safety starts with our scooter, and we believe that safety is really in two buckets. The first is the community protection aspect. We use composite geofencing, which means our geofencing lives onboard the scooter. It's always there. It has a very quick response time when entering into zones where it may not be allowed to be, as well as tip over protection. I know many of us, especially who have had a shared mobility system in the past, have seen those scooters tipped over on the street. The scooter is smart enough to know that if it was to be tipped over, it would automatically create a ticket in our dispatch center to let somebody know to go and pick it up and place it back in the spot where it's supposed to be, place it back upright.
A question on geofencing. I was not part of the council that approved the last round of the scooters, although I do remember the photo shoot from the Waco trip very well. But I wanted to ask, with geofencing, so if someone got on a scooter, scanned it, and wanted to take it out, Highway 84 on the way to Gatesville, they would not be able to go past a certain limit because electronically it's prohibited from that? Is that correct? There's some kind of perimeter that the scooters can't go past?
Absolutely, yeah. We've identified a service area where the scooters will be allowed to operate, and you would not be able to go past that service area.
Thank you.
Speaking to, continuing to speak on safety, rider protection is the other bucket that we think of in terms of safety. So we have a new rider mode, which is a road that whoever signs up for our service will be entered into in the beginning, and you'll have to take a rider safety quiz to learn about the regulations in the city of Waco, and where safe riding practices, where you're allowed to park, where you're not allowed to park. We are allowed to operate the scooters and where you're not. We also have a safe stop feature, so if you enter into a zone that is geofenced off and that is a no-ride zone, it will, rather than braking and stopping immediately, it will slow to a stop, gradually glide to a stop and keep the rider safe. So again, that's all part of the vehicle intelligence safety system that we've developed. Yeah, and that keeps everybody safe. We will be bringing the LinkUp equity programs here to Waco. We've found that when you make it easy to sign up, qualify and use our equity programs, more people ride. In Waco, we're proud to offer a 70% discount to anybody who is eligible for state, local, or federal assistance. There will also be a 30% discount for students enrolled at any institution of higher learning. So if you're at Baylor, if you're at the community college, or if you're a Waco resident but happen to be going to school somewhere else and coming back, you are more than welcome to use that student discount. We also accept prepaid debit cards into our system, and you can call to make a reservation if you do not have access to a smartphone. We make it very, very easy to sign up on our app. It's two quick clicks on our app and also on our website as well. Throughout the United States, we're very proud to have a fully benefited W2 workforce. Everybody here that will be a Super Pedestrian employee will be a locally hired W2 employee who will earn benefit, who will be fully benefited and earn a living wage. We have a customized training program, which is required for all new hires, so all of the repairs are done in-house by trained mechanics. We also have an equity commitment that we will work with a workforce partnership, which we have, we are working to identify now, to hire a diverse local workforce. And again, it all comes back to safety, and the highly-trained, invested, and appropriately-equipped workforce is just another tool that we use to enhance safety in our service. So now on to our proposal here for the city of Waco. We're planning a slow rollout, starting with 50 vehicles during the soft launch, and we will slowly scale up that service to meet demand. It will start as $1 to unlock the scooter and start your ride and go for 39 cents per minute that you ride our device. Again, anyone eligible for state, local, or federal assistance will be eligible to sign up for our LinkUp discount of 70%, and any students enrolled in institutions of higher learning will be able to access our 30% student discount. Our proposed hours of operation are 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM to really incentivize commuter use, and we are planning on a soft launch starting on October 9th with those 50 vehicles and beginning service fully on the 18th of October. I brought two devices here today. I brought them from our markets in Dallas. We also operate a market in Austin as well. The first is our standard e-scooter. We will be permitted to have up to 400 deployed in Waco, but that will be on a sliding scale, and we will increase to decrease depending on demand. We find that the standing scooter is better for shorter trips. The U.S. average is about 12.7 minutes. You have the ability to quickly mount and dismount, and it's got the smallest parking footprint available for our devices. We're also bringing a seated scooter. We're permitted to have up to 200 of those devices, again, on that sliding scale depending on demand. We see those devices are often used for longer trips. I personally love our seated scooter. It's my favorite when I'm going to the grocery store or have to carry things. I really enjoy using it. It's got that really high accessibility and ability to carry cargo when you're using it, so it's a great option, and we have the ability to scale those up and down as the seat is a modular device. So moving on to the proposed system map, we have identified 30 parking hubs within the city where we would like to begin deployments, as well as five event hubs that will be activated during large-scale events on the Baylor campus to prevent scooters from entering the Baylor campus. We have taken great lengths to make sure that our devices will not enter the Baylor campus in this initial rollout. It was made very clear to us throughout the process, working with the amazing city staff that we've had the pleasure to work with, that Baylor does not want devices on their campus, so we have taken great lengths to make sure of that. Couple of the geofences, just some descriptions of it. You'll see there's that purple area up at the top in Cameron Park area. The city informed us that per deed restrictions, that area is, you're not allowed to end your ride or start your ride due to some restrictions there, so there will be no devices staged in that area, as well as you will not be able to end your ride. If you were to ride there, you would be directed to leave that area to end your ride. The areas in red, areas like the Baylor campus, as well as Magnolia and the Transit Center, are no-ride zones, so you will not be able to use our devices in those zones, and you will not be able to end your ride in those zones. You'll have to remove your device from those areas in order to end your ride. We also have identified some slow zones, particularly along the suspension bridge and where there's high pedestrian use, and those are slow-ride zones. And we're working with the city on an exact miles per hour that the devices will be able to ride, but the devices will ride slower in those areas where there's high pedestrian traffic. And again, to your question, sir, about the service area, you can see the black outline will be where the scooters are available to be rented and used. We use the Imagine Waco Service Area as our measure to decide on a service area. And so members of the public can scan this QR code here to see a live demonstration of our geofences on our app. If you'd like to, any member of the public would like to download our app and take a look, the geofences are live for you to take a look and play around with. Just, I put a couple screens of what our app looks like. When you begin to, when you just find a scooter, you'll see on the first slide there, it'll tell you the price, as well as how much mileage on the battery, and the ability to scan it to start your ride. During your ride, the geofences will be on-device, so you'll be able to see where you are not allowed to ride. The scooter itself will also tell you, based on, you can see the lights here on the scooter will change depending on what zone you're in, so if you're in a slow zone or in a no-ride zone, they'll change and alert you to let you know that you're not there. We also have the ability to incentivize users to park in specific areas. We plan on using this immediately in the, around the Baylor campus to really incentivize students and make sure students do not bring their devices onto campus. Typically, we give a certain amount of credit if you park your device in those areas. I know as a college student, I would have taken any discount I could have possibly gotten. And so we will incentivize those parking hubs around Baylor to really incentivize the students to make sure they're not bringing their devices on campus. And we're planning on rolling out in style. We have a celebration planned for October 18th. We're partnering with Marriott Hotels, as well as we're working on some local partnerships to, which we'll be excited to announce soon. We'd love the ability to work with the city to have a key stakeholder and press event. We're also planning the specific date to support the celebration, which we know is a major event here in Waco. We'll be distributing free rides and giveaways, and also distributing helmets for anybody who'd like one. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions you have.
Any questions?
One, a couple of quick ones. Great presentation, Jacob. Appreciate the show here. Can you, I've not kept track with how this market has evolved, like in the last five years, maybe. Can you tell me a couple ways where you can differentiate yourself from the previous vendor that we had doing this? Is there some, is there some industry evolution that's where now it's a better product than it was in the last iteration that we had? Can you talk about that, or is it really just kind of basically the same thing?
Yeah, I, since your previous vendor, the devices have really changed and the technology has changed. Everything from geofencing technology to our ability to, say, fine users if they were to violate multiple rules has really changed significantly. What I think differentiates Super Pedestrian from other vendors who may be, who are interested in coming here is our community-oriented service. We really looked very deeply at the, we came here to test the prior devices, just to see how they worked and how the system was set up, and really took all of that into account when setting up our system here, speaking with local stakeholders, speaking, very close contact with the city. And we're always available 24/7 to make sure that the service really matches the community's expectations and needs, and we're very flexible to change things. If the city was to come and say, "We want a certain area geofenced off," if you'd like, you know, a stakeholder came to us and said, "Hey, we're having some issue here," we have the ability to really change things very quickly. And that goes back to our W2 workforce, who will be locally staffed here in Waco, to the ability to respond to issues very quickly.
Great, thanks, Jacob. And how will this be staffed in the initial rollout of 50? Is a couple people or?
I'm not entirely sure of the amount of people that we are hiring for the initial rollout. I know that they're working on that right now, but we are planning on hiring locally here. That's a big part of our service, and again, everybody will be, going back to your question on how it differentiates us, the ability to have W2 workforce means that people work in shifts, so we always have somebody on staff in order to respond to things, in order to make sure that the system is working well. So there will always be somebody on staff available.
Great, thanks, Jacob.
So I've noticed, I live near kind of the current zone of these, and I've noticed sometimes you'll see a cluster of them outside an establishment where people went into a restaurant, and I don't know if they Ubered back to the hotel or whatever it may be. What is the, what kind of cycle of picking up the scooters? Like, how will those services, how will that service work, and what can we expect when we see something like that?
Well, you can expect that we will come and redistribute them amongst other parking hubs in the area. We do see frequently that there are people who just do want to ride to those areas, and on days where we do see high ridership, we do prioritize getting people, getting our employees out on the street in order to rebalance those scooters. We are always making sure that our scooters are properly staffed, and so there is always somebody in our warehouse taking a look at where our scooters are across the map and making sure that if there's a cluster of devices in one area, we will dispatch somebody to go and pick it up and redistribute those devices elsewhere.
Okay. Does that usually happen within what type of timeframe? So like if you had, let's say you had five at a, at one location that wasn't necessarily a strategic location for you, like, how long would you expect to see the five there?
I couldn't tell you a specific timeframe at the moment. As we, the point of our slow rollout is to decide where some of those areas are and make adjustments to our system. We're constantly reevaluating and using the data that we collect to see, you know, where those hubs are, where there's a lot of movement of the scooters. I can't promise a specific timeframe, but I can tell you that we are constantly monitoring and will be moving them. There will always be somebody available to move scooters.
Okay, so someone's on the clock-
Yes.
-able to move the scooters. That's their job, essentially that's part of their job description.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Appreciate your presentation. We look forward to this. I know Wacoans are really going to enjoy the opportunity to utilize these scooters, and it's going to really help continue to make our downtown a dynamic place to be. So welcome to Waco, and we're excited to deploy these into the downtown economy.
Thank you so much.
All right. Mayor and council, our next work session is work session 799, discussion of public Wi-Fi expansion. We've got Mike Seerid, our chief information officer, coming up to provide an update on the progress that's being made at, I believe, as many as eight of our facilities, city of Waco facilities. I do want to give a shout out to council member Bearfield, who's not here today, but I know she's watching, because this was an update that she requested and a project that she's been monitoring very closely. So Andrea, we know you're watching and hope you enjoy the update. Mike?
Yeah, Councilman Bearfield, TML, and like you said, I know this is something, this issue's near and dear to her heart, and she's been a strong advocate for it.
Thank you, Bradley, and thank you, mayor and council. Appreciate you inviting me back to give you a quick update on our community Wi-Fi expansion So here's a quick outline of the agenda for the presentation. We'll look at the project overview. We'll discuss some goals that we set at the beginning. We'll look at the eight expansion locations that we've been working through. We'll check out the milestones and the current status of each of those locations, and then we'll look at the investments that we've made throughout this project. We'll talk through some next steps, and then we'll seek your feedback and open up some questions, if you have any. So from a project goals perspective, it was really the main objective here was access, bridging those digital gaps, just to make sure that we were providing locations with really good Wi-Fi access and secure access. We focused on city and facilities, just to make sure that we were not competing with local internet service providers. And I'll probably say this a few times throughout the presentation, but just to make sure that the surfing experience is secure and reliable and as robust as possible. And then as visitors and residents visit these locations, that the experience is the exact same, whether you're at the Doris Miller or you're at the South Waco Library. When you connect to the wireless network, it's the exact same experience, the same process, the same network name, that whole deal. So here are the eight locations that we've selected. As you remember, the Dewey Community Center was the first location for our pilot program, and then we brought to you late in April a resolution for you to approve to add six locations to that process. Throughout your feedback after the presentation, we added the South Waco Library as well for a total of eight locations. So here's some of our project milestones and the current status. The top five locations there, we jumped on those orders. It took a little while to get some of the gear in, but the multipurpose Doris Miller, East Waco Library, South Waco Community Center, and Central Library, we're live at those locations. I feel like we have some more work to do at those five to improve the outdoor Wi-Fi, but I think that those are in great shape. South Waco Library, I feel like either later this week or early next week, we'll be 100% at that location, and the team jumped on that one as soon as the gear arrived. The Bledsoe Miller Community Center, obviously that gear, we're holding it back, and as soon as the steam center gets moving, we'll be ready to integrate that wireless network into that process. And then obviously the Dewey Community Center, we've been live for some time now at that location. So here's a quick map. If you remember, back in April, I provided a map of each location of what we intended to do. This is the South Waco Library. We'll have seven indoor access points at that location, and if we feel like we need more, we'll make those adjustments as we go live. Here's the outdoor access points at the South Waco Library, and we feel like four is a good number to get good coverage in those parking lots. So this slide here is from a system that we purchased called EchoHow, which is, which is a system that we've enabled to measure the signal strengths at each location. So this is from last week. This is actually post-go-live, so this is an actual heat map of what we're seeing at this location. Green is good. Dark green is very good, so we feel like we have this location lit up pretty well. So here's some stats on unique clients per day at the Doris Miller, multipurpose center, East Waco Library, Central Library, and the South Waco Community Center. As you can see, the usage is ramping up, and we feel good about that. I think when we start rolling out some awareness campaigns, those numbers will continue to grow as well. And here's our first location, the Dewey Community Center. We're seeing an average of 60 to 65 users per day at this location, and I feel like that's not too bad at that location. Again, I think once we start putting some comms out around this, I think that usage will improve. So the FCC defines broadband as 25 megabits for downloads and 3 megabits for upload. I think a lot of folks would agree that that's a pretty dated, outdated speed definition for broadband. You know, there's some chatter that they will redefine that, those speeds, at some point soon, and as you see, we're measuring the bandwidth on each device at those locations. We feel really good about the Doris Miller and the East Waco, but at South Waco Community Center, we definitely needed to work on the upload speeds, and so we've ordered a new connection to support that for those users. As well as Central Library, we feel like those upload speeds should get better. And again, the whole approach here is we will continue to monitor this and just make sure that we're providing the best speeds possible at each of these locations. So I talked about this earlier, just the wireless network name is called community Wi-Fi. The Dewey, we have not changed that back yet since it was our first pilot site. We intend to do that soon, so that at every location, the wireless network name is the same. There's no password. Users have to acknowledge that they're going to connect and be good stewards of those resources. Once they're connected, they're put behind a very good firewall to protect them while they're online, and I think I've said that a few times, but I think that's important in this day and time, is to make sure that we have secured networks. Here are the investments that we've made to date, a little over $41,000 at the Dewey Community Center. That was general operating funds for that location, and then the seven additional sites there, which was provided by the Corona relief and economic security act, community development block grant. And so we've invested a little over $300,000 at those seven locations. And lastly, our next steps is to continue to monitor the bandwidth at those locations to make sure that we're guaranteeing optimal user, optimal user experience. Make sure we have technical support systems set up at those locations, so users know who to call if they have trouble. Community engagement, I think that's- Community engagement, I think that's one area that we need to work with Monica and her team to really get the word out at those locations. As well as maybe put some QR codes out at each location, make sure that those QR codes are multilingual and survey, survey those users to get direct feedback from them. And then this facility expansion, I think it's gonna be important for us to engage our stakeholders across the board if we wanna grow this effort. So look at the data, get feedback, engage your stakeholders, and look if we want to improve this at other locations as well. The last bullet point there, fiber optic vision, I think that's something that, that we need to get stronger with to connect these facilities with city-owned fiber. I think that will ultimately, long-term, make sure that we have the bandwidth at all of these locations to do what we need to do. And last, I just wanted to recognize the infrastructure team and the IT department that worked on this. Mr. John Branch, the IT manager, James Dallas, who has done an outstanding job, Mr. Darryl Ross, Mark Pope, and Justin McGraw, they've all played a big part in these projects. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions?
Right quick, Mike, great presentation. Appreciate it. This is a, an initiative that, yeah, Councilmember Bearfield was really passionate about. We have, the whole council was about getting better connectivity and Wi-Fi and availability to all, all Waco residents, because knowledge is power, and this is where you get a lot of knowledge online. Just right quick, you had great measurements there on signal strength. Are we doing any kind of KPI on, like, users? Are we seeing, like, at the Dewey where we've had it before, there was only three people there using it, and now there's 100 or 10, or are we trying to keep track of that, or is there a way to keep track of that?
Absolutely. The Aruba Wireless Network that we've set up, they have a control center that will keep all of that data and the history forever. And so we can absolutely look at that and measure that over time. And those are reports that we can easily generate and share that, share those out to you and put those on the website. But absolutely, I think that could, should be a KPI for what we do in IT.
Yeah, it's gotta be so cool to say, you know, now, this, this is a success story, because we've got all these additional users tapping in.
Absolutely.
Thanks. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, Mike, I'm sorry, I know we just killed the presentation. Is it possible to go to that map? I'm sorry about that, whoever's monitoring that. And I wanted to say, this is great work. I really appreciate your responsiveness. I know Councilmember Rodriguez was advocating for South Waco Community Center and South Waco Library to, to have this extension. And I, this looks great to me. I think the more facilities, the better. The only question I've got is that, is there a, I think the only library that's not accounted for is West Waco that I think technically is in District Five, but serves a lot of District Three and District Four residents as well. Is there plans to put that online as well?
Yes, sir. It's, it's new budget year, and that's something that I plan to work with ACM Hold and the folks to see if we can get that done. They already have a wireless network installed, but it would be good to have the same gear and the same experience as well. So we'll definitely take a look at that.
Yeah, greatly appreciated. I think this is great work. And this is, it's an equity measure, it's an access measure, and it's, it's a great enhancement to our libraries as well. So thank you and your IT infrastructure team for building this out. And I'm looking forward to West Waco coming online as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh, for those remarks. Yeah, I, I feel like every library should have Wi-Fi. I mean, our people go in there for information and to research, so what greater than our Wi-Fi? That's why I was concerned about South Waco Library not being included in all of this. And now we've got the main library, the West Waco Library is left out. So hopefully, we'll get that one online, and that would, all our libraries will have Wi-Fi connections and that our folks can go in there and freely use these and use them to their advantage and, and know that the council and the city care enough to where we wanna put things out there for them to be able to access and to use in their research, whether they're a student or just somebody looking up for maybe geology or whatever it is. But thank y'all for coming up with the idea of putting Wi-Fi in these different locations. So thank you. Thank you for this report.
Thank you.
This is great. Another win for the community, for sure. Question, you, you mentioned that West Waco does have Wi-Fi set up. Is it, is there free Wi-Fi there?
Yes, yes, sir.
There is free Wi-Fi. It's just not as good of quality as this, is that?
Yes, sir.
I just wanna make sure the community knows, like, there is free Wi-Fi at that library.
Absolutely.
So, very good. This is really, again, exciting to see that we're moving the, the ball down the field to making our public spaces just first in class. And I know everyone's gonna greatly enjoy it. So, thank you so much, Mike.
Thank you.
All right. Mayor and Councilor, our last work session of the afternoon is work session 800. So Cody, sometimes this happens, where we fly through the first presentations, and that last one has like an hour and a half to, for council questions and commentary, so. Sorry, Cody.
This is a lot. We have some hard questions for you to come in.
But this topic, though, I mean, it's a, it's a beefy topic. It's the discussion of City of Waco's solid waste disposal facilities, includes, including our possible gas and solar projects and possible, or proposed transfer station. So Cody, our Director of Solid Waste Services, has a lot to cover, for sure. And he'll, I think something that's worth noting, Cody, his team, as well as other members of city staff, have really been working hard on a, on a really a comprehensive approach to solid waste. Our current facility needs and, and really looking down the road. I would say with the new landfill project, transfer station, and other elements Cody's gonna cover, you'll see that there's just a lot of moving parts and a lot of great work going on. And we appreciate the council's unwavering support in this, because we're really trying to provide best-in-class services to our businesses and, and customers across the region. So, look forward to Cody's report. Hour and a half long. You've got the floor, Cody.
I don't, I think you've covered everything.
Further questions?
Put some, put some meat on the bone, please.
Cody, after your remarks, there will be a city council talent portion of this presentation. Holmes and I are gonna demonstrate a little pickleball for the people.
Well, Mayor and Council, thank y'all for the opportunity. Provides y'all an update on the solid waste facilities, or disposal facilities with the City of Waco. Cody Patel, the Director of Solid Waste. So at any point, if you have questions or comments, please feel free to jump right in. So we are going to be covering the existing landfill MSW 948A, talking about the statistics, airspace capacity, some sustainability projects planned for that site, as well as the new landfill MSW 2400, permit status, settlement status, and construction and anticipated opening. And then moving into transfer station, talking about the permit status, design, and then construction and opening of that facility. So as we go through this, some of these slides, y'all, y'all seen in the council retreat. And so there's additional data in here. So here is the incoming tonnage that we accepted at the existing landfill over the last six years. As you can see, in 2018 to 2020, it was, it was pretty consistent, kinda stagnant right there, around 300,000. And then from 2020 to 2021, we had a 7% increase. And then from '21 to 2022, an 18% increase. And you can see it plateaued after 2022 in this last year. So a couple of key contributors to those increases is, one, the central Texas region is just growing. There's more people, so we're generating more waste, more development, generating more waste. And then also, a key contributing factor is Lacey Lakeview landfill is reaching capacity. So they have been limiting the amount of customers that can utilize that facility. And so we are seeing some of the customers that have historically went to that site are starting to come to our site over the last couple of years. They, and Lacey Lakeview landfill, they are in the process of a permit expansion. Not sure exactly where they are in that, but they're looking to expand and go up, I believe. So we're gonna break down the incoming waste a few different ways. This is by hauler type. Again, this is the one y'all, I think y'all've seen before. The blue is our City of Waco collections. The orange is your franchise haulers, like Waste Management Republic, some of those bigger collection companies. Your gray is your non-franchise haulers, and that gold-yellow is your self-haulers. So cash customers, just regular, regular citizens coming in, as well as construction companies that are hauling their own waste. So one thing to mention is the City of Waco, we do not have an exclusive franchise for commercial solid waste collections. We are an open market, so we're competing for commercial, industrial, institutional business with, with those large companies we mentioned earlier. And with these, with these percentages, you can see the trends are, City of Waco's pretty much stayed the same over the last six years, with the big difference being a drop in our franchise and an increase in our self-haulers.
Um, can I go back to that one? I'm sorry to interrupt in the middle of your presentation, but since we have an hour and a half.
Thank you, Bradley.
I love this, this, this graph particularly. The first question I have is the, the 367 on the end, that's only three, three quarters, right?
No, no. Okay, so this, all these years, they're not calendar years. I should have probably had a note in there. This is actually the TCQ fiscal year, also our reporting year, which is August through September, or September through August. It's not the same as our fiscal year. So yeah, September through August, and our, not the same as ours, it's not a calendar year. So it is, it is complete, it is a complete year.
It is a complete year, fiscal year, good. And I guess the, and the orange, I didn't start remembering seeing this broken out like this. It's pretty interesting that a third, basically the bottom, blue, is our trash. But guy comes to your door and picks up your trash, that's really only about a third of our volume in the landfill. And the orange part is, are the republics and the waste management folks of the world that are doing it as franchises, and then the other ones are just self, non-franchise. Interesting. I think it's all ahead on that, but yeah, it's, it's a good base for the, to predict how, who's taking our land, our trash to the landfill and, and how they're paying for it and all that. But keep going.
All right, so here is self-reported usage. So where is the waste being generated? So, again, this is one we've shown before, but this is, one thing to note, this is self-reported data. So as somebody comes into the landfill, we ask them two questions. What do you have? Where are you coming from? And there, we do believe the numbers are slightly skewed towards the City of Waco, but it is the best available information we have. So we feel like there are gonna be some folks that come in, that they're gonna say they're from the, from Waco with fear that they might be turned away if they aren't, because they know our landfill's reaching capacity. And then at times, we also have language barriers, that we, we do have bilingual staff, but not 100% of the time. So there are, that, we do feel like it's skewed a little bit. But even though, even with that information, over the last few years, it's been pretty consistent, even as we've increased tonnage at the landfill. It's been a pretty much an 80/20 split. I think 2023 was maybe 79/21, but pretty much an 80/20 split. So here, we're gonna break down the usage for some of those communities that are, have a higher percent usage or bringing in more, breaking those out. And then we still have quite a few that are combined in at other cities and counties. And so one thing to highlight here is a big jump in Belle Meade, and then a big jump in the other cities and counties. So from 2021 to 2023, we had a, quite a few communities have over a 200% increase in usage at our landfill. Again, we, most of that we attribute to Lacey Lakeview reducing their level of service or the amount of customers that can utilize that facility. So here's our overall community usage map or our service area. As these new facilities come online, we do expect those, this to stay the same and potentially grow. So for types of waste, really when we dove into this, there's, this is, there was no big surprises here. MSW's a municipal solid waste, the biggest percentage of incoming waste is what we expected. Rush was pretty consistent. Now, there was a big jump from '21 to 2022 in industrial. But we did have a, a large commercial customer we added on our roll-off division. So we also had a pretty sizable increase in our revenue there. So again, that wasn't that surprising once we saw that. And for CND, that's been a pretty consistent increase over the last few years. Now, we've, we've changed rates to try to encourage people to go elsewhere, as well as providing some education to try to get some waste diverted or CND. And it is still increasing, but at the end of the day, we would rather see it at our landfill than in creeks or vacant lots, so.
It is a true, Cody, that the CND doesn't compact quite as well either, right? It fills up the landfill a little bit faster marginally.
Yeah, it doesn't, like I say, it's not gonna compact or densify as much as paper or some type of organic material like food. So yeah, it eats up our airspace a little bit more than your MSW does, which is going right into our airspace capacity slide. So we do an airspace analysis every year. Starting in 2021, we began doing this every, twice a year, I mean. So we could really dial in that capacity, that fill date, and to marry it up with where we were with development of our new disposal facilities. So the, the last time we reported this, in that blue box, you can see that July of 2025 date. That was our close, that was when we anticipated the landfill reaching capacity. And then the latest report, the 2023 semi-annual that's in the red, we actually, our compaction rate was, increased over that six-month period, and it pushed out our capacity date or our fill date to November of 2025, which is really good news. But just to be frank, we have had some compactor issues, equipment issues over the last few months. So we do anticipate that rate to come down with the next report. So we still, we still feel it's pretty prudent and conservative to stay at that July of 2025 date. And then just as a reminder, you see the, there's two different red rows. You've got the November of 2025 and then the April of 2025. So the November of 2025 is our current compaction rate from that last report. And then the April of 2025 would be if we reduced our compaction rate by 25% for the life of the landfill. So again, still feel like we're, we're good in that July timeframe. And so we're, that's what we still have on all of our schedules. All right, so moving into some of our sustainability projects, we're gonna talk about landfill gas beneficial use in our solar farm project. So landfill gas beneficial use, we, working closely with the Sustainability Group, partnered with SES engineers to perform a high-level feasibility study. And just, and have the results of the study, and just to be honest, they weren't great. The focus there was, rather than like renewable natural gas or something like that, it was for power generation and for a facility to be owned and operated by the City of Waco. And on the other hand, we've also had significant interest from private developers for a renewable natural gas development project at our existing landfill. So we're at a, we're at a spot where we think it's a really good opportunity with where we are, with the development of our disposal facilities, to go out with a request for proposals with an RFP for a landfill gas beneficial use project, pretty broad in nature, and let that industry come back and tell us what's the best value for the City of Waco, and what's a, what's the best long-term solution. So putting a good scoring system together for an RFP to help us get a project, a sustainable project that is gonna be a, a long-term benefit to the City of Waco in solid waste. And then for the solar farm project, so at Solar Farms, at an active landfill feasibility study, we issued a request for proposals in April of '23. We opened those in June of this year, and we actually have a resolution to award a professional services contract to Jones Lang LaSalle and Americas on the agenda today. So we had quite a few proposals, and they were all really good. As we went through the scoring system, we felt that Jones Lang LaSalle and Americas, JLL, would, gave, gave us the, or were the most qualified and would give us the best product moving forward. So we're excited to see where that project goes and how it can fit in with a, potentially with a landfill gas beneficial use project.
Cody, there, there's some methane infrastructure already there, right, at our, at 948. So we have to, I guess we'll find out from SES, but would we be able to reuse some of that that's already there?
Yeah, that, yes, that, we'll, we'll utilize that. And then if we were to partner with a developer, they would install additional lines to get, to capture more. But yeah, we have a, a system that captures, collects it, and eventually flares it off. The picture you see there, kinda in the background, that's our actual flare. And then that picture in the forefront there, that is a recently opened RGN renewable natural gas facility at Twin Oaks Landfill down in College Station.
Thanks.
So moving into the new landfill, so for permit and settlement detail for, so for our permit, we are, we've received all of our permits necessary to start construction and eventually open, own and operate a landfill facility. So in May of '22, 2023, we received our permit, MSW permit from TC, TCQ. And as, we have also settled with all of the parties that were contesting and protesting the landfill. So would like to give appreciation for, to those parties for their willingness to reasonably negotiate and help us get through and get to this point in the project.
Big shout out to Paul Kane and Jennifer Ritchie on that one, too, as, as well as Cody.
All right, jumping into the construction schedule. So here we have really two projects that are on the critical path. Your integral project that has a creek cross- Your entry road project that it has a creek crossing, and then your Sector One excavation and liner installation. So for your entry road, that, really the big part there is there's a creek crossing for Horse Creek. We need to install some culverts so we can get heavy equipment across there, so we can start the excavation of, uh, Sector One, uh, and eventually get that liner in. So we've opened bids for that project already. We opened those, uh, in September twenty sixth, and, uh, really got pretty, pretty excited about the bids we did receive. So we're looking at getting that on council agenda, uh, for consideration of award on the October seventeenth meeting. Um, and we're going to monitor that progress of that project really closely because we want to be sure we issue bids for the Sector One project in a, in a very strategic time because we don't want to have a point where we have a contractor waiting for those culvert to be finished so they can start excavation and eventually claim delays or have other issues. We also don't want to be at a point where we have, uh, opportunity for a project to start and we're waiting on contracts or council approval or, or the bidding process. So we'll be following that really closely just to make sure that the timing matches up. So with all that, that's, those are two big projects within the overall landfill project. There are several other projects that are important to get it open, not as time-critical as those two. But once we finish up all the necessary infrastructure, um, the next step is the TCQ pre-opening inspection, which is about thirty days, where TCQ will come in, look at all, inspect the site, and then determine if it's, uh, ready to open or if we need to do anything different. We, again, we expect that to take about thirty days, and then once that is, uh, once we have that approval, we are good to accept waste. But we will not be open to the general public at that point. We have to put in a fluff layer, so select fill, um, to make sure that we are putting material on that new liner that's not going to compromise or penetrate that liner. So we're going to be very cautious and protective of that, using that select fill. We anticipate that taking about two months or about sixty days. And at that point, it would be open to the general public, and we anticipate that being about May twenty twenty five. So we're still in front of that July date, and that, and it has, open date has pushed out since our, our last presentation at the council retreat, but we're, again, we're still ahead of that date. And while we're getting close, it's not all doom and gloom, there's, there is some positive as we get into the transfer station. All right, so we're going to talk about the permitting, design, construction, all on this Gantt chart. So there's really two key elements to the permitting of the transfer station you have. So it's going to be on top of an old landfill, so there's a, it makes it where it's a little bit easier and quicker to permit, but there are also some additional steps. So we have to do a development permit modification, uh, and then, which allows us to start construction of that transfer station. And then we have to do a transfer registrate, transfer station registration that will allow us to open and operate a transfer station. So we've already submitted the development permit modification. TCQ is reviewing it. We've went through, uh, a few rounds of comments, and we feel really good about where we are. We think we may even receive that approval within, uh, the next month or so. Uh, and then SES engineers, they are contracted to prepare the transfer station registration. We, they have sent, City of Waco the final draft, city staff has reviewed that, made comments, and they are making final edits so we can submit that to TCQ for their review. Um, and at the same time, they're actively working on the transfer station design. SES is working on the main site, Walker Partners is helping with some of the infrastructure, the, some roadway improvements, and potentially a wastewater line as well. But we feel really good about where we are with the permitting and design of that facility, and hoping to get our first RFB out for construction, um, later in twenty twenty three, and potentially start construction early twenty twenty four, which would still put us on that same schedule to open in January of twenty twenty five. So here's an overall site plan of the transfer station. It's a little bit changed from what you've seen in, uh, previous presentations, just as we get further into design, figuring out how this best fits the, the property, um, and how we can make it work with some of the requirements with TexDOT as moving that entrance a little to the south. So this, this is off of South University Parks FM thirty four hundred, which is a TexDOT roadway. We are, uh, working with TexDOT to do some required improvements. So we're working through a LOSA, which is a local on-system agreement. That is something that we will put, uh, in front of council for consideration, uh, for approval in the next meeting on October seventeenth. But that just allows us to construct, uh, widen that FM thirty four hundred, uh, that's a TexDOT roadway. But other than that, the, the overall site plan is, is pretty similar in the, the type of operation we would have. So here is a rendering of
Can I ask a question? On the location on South University Parks Drive, how far is that from a residential area?
From a resident, um, so, let me see if I can get the, so on the right side or the east side of the property boundary, uh, from the actual property boundary, that's about, I think, fifty to seventy-five feet from the property boundary.
That doesn't answer my question.
I got, um, how about after the meeting, I pull up a map and show you where it, where it is on, on the map? I think it's in a pretty remote area.
That, that's, that's basically my question. I just wanted to know.
It's not near a neighborhood, it's pretty remote.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
But I'll, I'll show you exactly where it is on a map after, afterwards.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, uh, here's the rendering of the transfer station. Four pretty large bay doors that will allow trucks to come in, that will dump waste on the concrete floor, which we will pile up and then, uh, put into semis, uh, to transfer to a permitted TCQ landfill. All right, we'll wrap, kind of wrapping this all into one, here's, uh, just the overall view of the future, um, solid waste operations in this region. You can see the bottom left, you see MSW nine four eight A is our existing landfill. The bottom, uh, the blue dot, MSW thirty, uh, ten thirty nine is a closed landfill, but our proposed transfer station, so that permit number will likely change. Right in the middle of your page, you can see MSW sixteen forty six A, that's that Lacy Lakeview landfill. And that'll, that, that number will also change as they work through their permitting process. And then at the top, you can see our MSW twenty four hundred, the new landfill.
Cody, why don't you back up on that map for a second? I think that would be helpful, might address, um, Councilmember Rodriguez's question, you know, the, the blue dot, that MSW ten thirty nine is a mile and a half south of the loop, outside, uh, the boundary of the loop. Uh, this is a, a very rural area, there's not like residential subdivisions, it's, it's a very rural character.
Oh, good, thank you, thank you, Bradley.
It's outside the City of Waco, it's in ETJ.
I was just wondering if I was going to get hit by any residents who would, they'd hear this discussion.
Sure, sure.
It's at the site of a former landfill, right?
That's right.
Former.
I mean, from the sixties, I think.
So kind of wrapping this up, uh, combined schedule, it shows just a high level of the schedule for the new landfill, MSW twenty four hundred, and then the, uh, schedule for the transfer station. While yes, the MSW twenty four hundred overall open date has pushed out, um, we are going to be monitoring the construction, working with those contractors to make sure we eliminate any potential delays, to try to keep that on the schedule it is right now. And then for the transfer station, that's, that's kind of our safety net. Getting that open January twenty twenty five allows us a lot of flexibility, um, for when the new, existing landfill fills and our new landfill opens, regardless of those landfills, if we have that transfer station open, we're able to take our waste somewhere without significantly altering our current operations.
So that's, that's the stopgap in case it gets real tight in terms of transferring, in, in terms of closing down one and opening the other. If that window gets real narrow, the transfer station will be there to be our kind of back, backdrop, backstop there.
That's right. And, and if we're, if we're not taking it to a city-owned landfill, there, I mean, there's likely going to be increase in tipping fees and, and mileage for getting there, but we still have a way to get it there. So our, we won't have our collection vehicles long hauling to anywhere to where they're not on route, they're, they're, they're doing what they're made to do. So summarizing all this, our existing, or, yeah, existing landfill, while our annual tonnage has increased, um, it has kind of plateaued over the last couple of years. Our anticipated fill date, we are still shooting around that July of twenty twenty five date. For the new landfill, MSW twenty four hundred, we received all our, we received all our permits, all the parties are settled with. Our construction is set to begin, uh, in late twenty twenty three with the anticipated opening date of May twenty twenty five. And then transfer station, our permitting and design are going on at the same time. We're looking to issue our first RFB towards the end of twenty twenty three, start construction in twenty twenty four with a general, open, with a open date for the general public of January of twenty twenty five. So a lot going on. With that, I will, uh, open up to any questions or comments you may have. Questions?
Um, Holmes here, Cody, great, great, great presentation, a lot of good, uh, good-looking graphs, a lot of good-looking Gantt charts there. I know when we started this, I don't know, eight, eight years ago, um, that our scope was to have a strategy for long-term, uh, a long-term regional solution for landfill. And I think the, like, the light's at the end of the tunnel here on, on, uh, getting to that, uh, goal. And also, uh, when I first got on council, I think it was in the second meeting that I came to, we started talking about this project. And twenty twenty five seemed like a long ways away, and now it's, uh, twenty-four months out. It's, uh, the, the timeline has been very compressed as far as the, uh, the, the use of nine forty eight. And this is the first question I have, and I got a couple here. Is there any opportunities, can you flip back to that one slide that kind of gave the Gantt on, uh, and on the transfer station, the twenty four hundred? Yeah, are there any opportunities here for compression? I know, as, and as Josh just said, or as Councilmember Border just said, it's, it's kind of a tight window on the back with like sixty, ninety days. Are there opportunities here that we could
We, we've
Optimistically say, the, the perimeter fencing would only take two months, it wouldn't take five months or something like that.
So we've compressed it about as, as much as we can, um, with those top two projects. Basically, when that ex, Sector One excavation and liner's installed, that's, that's the last date. Everything else is going to be done before that. So we have room to move, we've actually deprioritized all those other items to make sure that the entry road, that creek crossing, and then Sector One project are designed and ready to go as soon as we could get them going. So it's, it's about as compressed as it, as it can get. The other, the only other options there is, once we get into construction, really pushing the contractor and, and setting some aggressive schedules, um, to try to get those dates, hit the, hit the dates that we've shown.
Got it, because when you look at that, your first graph, uh, where you see that marginal increase in the fill rate at nine forty eight, it makes you start thinking, well, maybe, although you ran some projections, and it looks like we'll be okay. The, I just want to comment on the transfer station. I just think that, that wasn't part of the original plan, I recall, but this, it gives us such, uh, flexibility. And, uh, you know, in a worst-case scenario where something happened at one of the landfills, we could just start going third-party or outsource the actual movement of the, I'm thinking of an extreme case, but, uh, you'd be able to move that out of the transfer station with, uh, units that weren't city in a worst-case scenario. Uh, you could outsource the whole thing if you wanted to. But I, I, I just think that, that addition to the, or that added element to this, uh, solution is really, makes a lot of sense, uh, as far as flexibility. The energy recovery I like, and I like that we're taking next steps on just the study of what we can do with JLL and, and, uh, SES on the methane and the solar. That makes a, a lot of sense, too, back at nine forty eight. And then the one thing we didn't talk about, I know that we've got some property that we, that we have out in, at, near nine forty eight, that we have in our land, City of Waco land bank, um, that may give us some flexibility on, there's other places we want to land bank besides out there. So I, I like this, this is hitting on a lot of solutions, checking a lot of boxes. And, uh, uh, as we transition from nine forty eight to twenty four hundred, I think it's, you got everything laid out here and planned out. Great, great, uh, plan and great presentation. Thanks, Cody.
I was, but by saying the, you know, the attention to detail that's been exhibited not only in this presentation, but the work of our team is just really incredible and deserves to be committed because we did, you know, we are working towards a hard deadline, and so making sure everything gets done correctly is critical. And, um, I just want to say publicly how much I appreciate, um, Paul Kane, Jennifer Ritchie, and Bradley Ford for all of their work, as well as you, Cody. And I, um, this has been, again, many years in progress, as Jim mentioned, um, landfills have long lifespans, but it takes a lot of work to get there. And, um, Dale Fissler was the city manager when we were having, um, these initial conversations, followed by Wiley Stem, um, and Kyle Dever was the mayor, and they, they all really got this ball rolling, and it's really, um, meaningful that we're able to report publicly that we're on track, um, and that we have really put the, the puzzle pieces together that hopefully is going to result in this, um, long-term generational solution to this, um, issue. And by the time it closes, who knows, maybe there'll be a new technology where there's not even trash anymore. But again, really appreciate the hard effort and hard work that our staff is, has put into this, um, and really excited that the, uh, the public is going to have, um, a, uh, regional, um, municipally-owned landfill that protects our rates and ensures that we have a, a, a good source, um, uh, for, um, this, this issue. So again, thanks, Cody.
Thank you.
Any requests for future agenda items? Or recess the work session, reconvene for regular session, as read into the record by the city secretary at four oh eight PM? Good time.
Is that a record?
Attorney General briefing, Attorney Briefing, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section five five one point oh seven one, Contract for Lake Brazos Dam Erosion Project. Personnel, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section five five one point oh seven four. Nomination and appointment of individuals to McLean County Appraisal District Board of Directors. Real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section five five one point oh seven two. And economic development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section five five one point oh eight eight seven. We are now in executive session.